Evening El Segundo, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Perstuck?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Boiles?
Here. Thank you very much. Alright, we will have the invocation led by Pastor Javier Bueno from the RTLA Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Baldino. All please arise.
So we're honored to be here tonight to lead this time of prayer and for the chance to be part of this moment. Let's pray. Lord, I pray for our mayor, city council members, and the new official being sworn in. Grant them your protection, wisdom, and creativity as they lead this city forward. Guide them with clarity to address the challenges and strength this community. May their leadership be marked by integrity, unity, and a heart to serve the people of El Segundo. Bless this city with peace, progress, and prosperity, and may your favor rest upon them and all its residents. Amen.
Alright, thank you Pastor, that was well stated. Thank you very much Councilmember Baldino. Next up is special presentation, so... Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Public Communications, now is the time and place. Do we have any cards, Madam Clerk?
We have one this evening.
We have one card this evening, okay? We're gonna limit that communication to five minutes. Who do we have?
We have Mr. Ron Swanson.
You get the full thirty, Ron.
Evening Council. I haven't been here in a long time, so first off, season's greetings to everybody. I just wanted to say thank you to Carol and to Tracy, what, twelve years? Eight years over here. I mean, you combined twenty years of public service. That's, and you don't need to do it, but they do it. And that's a huge sacrifice to somebody to take and do that. And that's kinda why I've never tried to do this, because I like all my stuff in my wallet, not half of it. My wife wouldn't like that. But I wanna thank everybody here that does what they do. Because without you, you taking your position and running a campaign, a campaign and being successful at what you do here in this town, this wouldn't be the town that it is. So I appreciate what you do. Best of luck. It's been a big sacrifice, both of you, and good luck to the new council members and the new city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. That's it for Public Communications. Okay, we're gonna close Public Communications. Moving on to special presentations. We have, let's see, we got a list. Melissa Ramoso, are you here? Hey, how are you? I think we've got a presentation, and I believe this is for outgoing city clerk, city treasurer, Matt Robinson here this evening? Matt? No? Okay, and outgoing city councilwoman?
He'll be here.
He'll be here in a second? Okay, great. Melissa, please, if you would mind.
Alright, well, I'll turn this way.
By the way, mayor, herself former mayor, works for Assemblymember Almar Sushi, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, congratulations on your reelection. And also, a great thank you.
You could, you could, you could stand on your side.
Sure, usually, we do it face this way. We'll do that. Okay, so councilwoman, if you'd like to join me here, since I'll present the certificate, if that's possible. Councilwoman and treasurer, and also city clerk, it is a great honor to be here on behalf of Assemblymember Almar Sushi. As the mayor just said, I am an elected official myself, and being the only woman on the dais is not always easy. Your leadership was, your leadership was seen, and you will be missed on the dais. So I know we'll see you through the Ed Foundation and around the community. So thank you for all your service. And as well to the city clerk, making sure our meetings, meetings are on time, and making sure the agenda is out and there's full transparency. It is a hard job, and I understand why you'd wanna retire at this point. So thank you for all your hard work. And for the treasurer as well, making sure there's full transparency in your financials and making sure audits are done. It is not easy work. So you make the community and this council and this city run as well as it could. And we are thankful on behalf of the assembly member to know that this city is one of the great cities in his assembly district. So thank you to all three of you for your leadership, and El Segundo will miss you. Thank you. Yeah, you get the, you guys should just actually just stand here at this point.
Councilor, did you wanna come down? You're good? Okay. Alright, here we go. And a couple photos. Okay, thank you so much.
Sorry, I'll, I'll just take one in the middle. Thank you. I can send it. There you go, she's cute. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramoso.
Of course.
Great seeing you. Jesslyn, is Jesslyn here from Supervisor Mitchell's office? Jesslyn Waldron, you here? Okay, maybe she'll be here in a bit, I know she wanted to be here. I know Scott Houston is here, our director from West Basin. Mr. Houston, please, let's give him a round of, a warm welcome.
What's up? If it's okay, I'll use the podium real quick, and then happy to do the photos, but well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, yes, Scott Houston, Division Four Representative of the West Basin Municipal Water District, and a proud El Segundo resident, of course, as well. But I wanted to come down and say a few words on behalf of our Board of Directors and myself. First of all, I do wanna congratulate Drew Boiles upon your reelection to the City Council, as well as incoming councilmember Michelle Keldorf, congratulations. And I also wanna congratulate, you know, my dear friend Susan Truax for being elected incoming city clerk. But I also have proclamations here, one for Tracy Weaver and also one for Carol Perstuck. But regarding Tracy, who has been our clerk, yes, since 2012, and has helped us keep our records and run that department efficiently, as well as your long-term commitment to the city as a resident and community leader. We greatly appreciate you and your service to this city. As well as Carol Perstuck, who also is, you know, a longtime resident of El Segundo and has given so much to this community, including being the Executive Director of our Ed Foundation. But you've also been instrumental paying attention to water and the water world and the things that happen at West Basin, which I appreciate, as well as the Hyperion incident. You have really been a leader on that, too. And so I thank you for that personally and our board. And so with that, I do have a proclamation from our Board of Directors for Carol, as well as a proclamation for Tracy. So I'd like to present those, and thank you so much for your service.
Alright, a few photos? Alright, a couple photos, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Houston, and of course, Councilmember Giroux, reelected as well. Yeah, that's, that's okay, no worries. Happens to the best of us, Scott, happens to the best of us. I've done it myself. Also from Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office, Jesslyn Waldron, are you here? I think I heard Jesslyn's here. She's going to the car. Okay, so Connor, please. El Segundo, born and raised right here for Senator Ben Allen's office. Please, let's give him a warm welcome.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Hope you're all having a good evening. I'm here on behalf of Senator Ben Allen, representing California Senate District Twenty-four. Here to honor some wonderful members of the El Segundo City Council who are going to be leaving us. First, we have Carol Perstuck, who's done a lot for education in the city of El Segundo. As a former Eagle myself, I can really appreciate that. We have our city clerk Tracy Weaver, who does all the behind-the-scenes work to make sure the gears in the city keep on turning. I know El Segundo is going to miss her. And we have our treasurer, Matt Robinson, who takes care of the city's finances and investments, which I know is a difficult job, and to make sure I get this right, the most important five square economic miles on the West Coast? There you go, the world, the world. I, I lowballed it, I'm sorry about that.
And I've also got one more.
For the city of El Segundo, for being an Eddie Award finalist for one of the top five most business-friendly small cities in Los Angeles County, we really appreciate the tireless efforts of the mayor and city council to make that happen, and Senator Allen is proud to represent this outstanding city. So thank you to all of you, and I hope you all have a great retirement.
Jesslyn Waldron, Paige and Jesslyn Waldron. Alright, you made it. Thank you for being here from Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. Let's give her a warm welcome.
I'll take this, just 'cause I don't know, I like to move around a little bit. Sure. Um, sorry to be late, today was the day I was running here. Thank you for having me, City Council, Mayor Boiles. I guess I'll start with recognizing councilmember Perstuck. I have to, I represent LA County Supervisor Holly Mitchell in the Second District, and I represent four cities. That means four times five city councils is twenty. I have three women. And I say that to say, um, she's, she's breaking glass ceilings, I, I, we're gonna miss her on the city council. Hearing her stories as a woman on the city council, she's a boss. And, and the conversations I've had with her, I really admire your work, your way of thinking, your brainstorming with me. You still owe me a lunch. I, I fully plan on having that with you soon and staying in touch and working with you. And then my brain is a little fried, so I'm gonna cheat for the other two, and recognizing city clerk Tracy Weaver, your unwavering commitment to the city and residents has been nothing short of extraordinary. You've been quite a force behind many processes that keep our running, or this city running smoothly. So on behalf of Supervisor Mitchell, where is she? There she is! Thank you. Thank you for your service. And for the city treasurer, Matthew Robinson, your commitment to ensuring the financial health and stability of El Segundo has been remarkable. Your integrity and expertise and careful stewardship have safeguarded the city's resources, allowing us to plan for a stronger and more sustainable future. The impact of all of your work will be felt for years to come. So on behalf of Supervisor Mitchell, thank you for your service to El Segundo.
Okay, here we go, a couple photos, guys. See, the mayor is skedaddling back there. Yeah, one more? Did you want one with your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, could, could you, could you?
You're the best.
No. Great, sure. Alright, here we go, a couple more photos. There we go, thank you very much.
Alright, next up, we have Mr. George, Daryl George, our city manager.
Yes, for, well, I've got double duty at this part of the presentation tonight. First off, I'm pinch hitting for Congressman Ted Lou's office, where I get to present the scroll's Certificate of Congressional Recognition to our three outgoing electeds. Let me, if you guys can come back and I can share the wording on the certificate. Councilman Perstuck, Certificate of Congressional Recognition presented to Carol Perstuck, City Councilmember, in recognition and celebration of your eight years of service on the El Segundo City Council, and with sincere appreciation for your tremendous dedication to the city of El Segundo. Signed by Ted Lou, Member of Congress Thirty-Sixth District. And also a certificate of congressional recognition to Tracy Weaver, City Clerk, in recognition and celebration of your twelve years of service as City Clerk for the city of El Segundo, and with sincere appreciation for your tremendous dedication to the El Segundo community. Ted Lou, Member District Thirty, Thirty-Sixth District. And then finally, same wording, Matt. Four years of service, also signed obviously by Congressman Ted Lou. Congratulations on all you did. And the second part of my presentation this evening, I guess it's on behalf of the city and city staff. I know the council members will have their opportunity to share a few words, but Councilmember Perstuck, if you can come down, please, I could give you, in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo, City Councilmember Twenty-S sixteen to Twenty-Twenty-Four, Mayor Protem Twenty-Eighteen to Twenty-Twenty. If I could just, just a few words, I've worked with, I've been in local government and administration for almost forty years, long time, worked with probably close to a hundred council members, and I can honestly say that working with Councilmember Perstuck for the last almost three years that I've been here has been a pleasure, a joy, a learning experience. I've appreciated her knowledge and history of the city and her unwavering support of things that she's passionate for, and I will miss that and wanna wish you the best. Absolutely. Oh, I'm sorry, the, the other good part here, beautiful flowers. Absolutely, thank you. Tracy? In recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo, City Clerk, Twenty-Twelve to Twenty-Twenty-Four, and also working with you the last three years has been a, a joy. You've been a, a rock in the city clerk's office. In our E-Team meetings, you've kept us on task in getting the, the agenda packets prepared, always sending out the emails when things are due, and I know we're all gonna miss you on the E-Team, wishing you the best, the nagging emails, but we, we wish you the best, and we know you'll have a wonderful second chapter here, a third chapter, whatever chapter it is, health and happiness. Also, Matt, you don't get flowers, sorry. But you do get, you do get a plaque. Matt, come on up. Matthew Robinson, in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo, City Treasurer, Twenty-Twenty to Twenty-Twenty-Four. And my words to Matt, I mean, I've, every quarter, Matt comes in and gives us revenue projections and investment strategies, and short of amazing, I mean, I sit there and watch these, I mean, some of the graphs are hard to read, but I always know that there's a good number at the end. And that's what's, that's what's the most important thing, and we are gonna miss that that ingenuity, that, that investment mind that you have, and really, it's been an amazing asset for this city over the years that you've served. Congratulations.
Alright, thank you, Mr. George. Also, we have Dino Marsashi from the City of El Segundo Finance Department.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Here to thank Matt Robinson for his years of service to the city of El Segundo. Matt started with the city, actually, back in 2015, as a member of the Investment Advisory Committee. And that's where we first got to experience his investment knowledge. And little did we know then the impact Matt would have on the Treasury Department and the city as a whole. In 2020, Matt became the last elected treasurer for the city of El Segundo. And while the start was a little crazy due to the pandemic that year, Matt still quickly got to work implementing new reporting and ideas. He developed a custom report for Treasury Department, saving money and also a great deal of time, you know, by automating that monthly investment report that he also presents quarterly. Matt challenged us to think more broadly about investments and diversification. You know, he expanded our investments while utilizing our investment policy. Matt's reports and presentations are now legendary, as the city manager mentioned. He took a very good quarterly report and made it even better, and for that, we thank him. Matt, it's been a pleasure working with you as our city treasurer. On behalf of the Finance and Treasury Departments, I would like to thank you for your service.
Alright, here we go. Yeah, a couple more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dino. Oh, that concludes our special presentations. Next up, we have a procedural motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Baldino, seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Any polls on consent? Do I have a motion to approve consent?
But also moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Alright, the, we have a resolution before us to, we are asked to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four consolidated general municipal election, and Madam Clerk Weevil will present.
Excuse me, Mark Hensley will read the resolution by title only, and then you will vote.
One job, Mark. One.
Caught up in the moment. Go ahead, she looks crazy.
A resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held November fifth, twenty twenty-four is ready for adoption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and City Attorney. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Okay. Giroux on the first, do we have a second?
Baldino, seconds.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, comments from outgoing councilmember Carol Perstuck.
So serving the city of El Segundo these past eight years as your councilmember has been a privilege. As a council of five, I am proud of our accomplishments. Looking back at my notes from eight years ago, I am pleased to say that we have addressed all the issues that I had identified as opportunities. Including enhancing the city's technology, developing and getting passed a business license measure which hadn't been done since the nineteen seventies, and provide a structure of strategic planning and net-zero budgeting. However, the one thing I am generally proud of is playing a key role in ensuring we move forward with the renovations of the teen center and skate park. And as a council, kept a promise to the community that a previous council made, which is renovation of the plunge. I will be very happy to see people swimming in the, in the new plunge precisely one year from today and watch kids skating in the new park, June of twenty twenty-six. Delise, remember that date. I know the city is in good hands with all, all of you on the council. I only ask that you please keep the renovations of our parks moving forward. Years ago, El Segundo parks were the envy of the South Bay. Please ensure that they once again become the town's jewels, so everyone can enjoy them. My hope for this community, excuse me, and the leadership moving forward would be to put our residents and small businesses first. That tradition and integrity service the podium from which to lead, and perceived progress and success be tempered with the unwavering commitment to that end and to support all the people through the lens of service. Thank you very much, and Class of Eighty-One. Thank you very much, and Class of 81, check it out.
Thank you, Councilmember Pursstik. Very moving, thank you very much. We're on to reports, and reports this evening are taking a little bit different path. The reports are going to be remarks to outgoing elected officials.
Does Matthew want to say anything?
Oh, Matt, yeah, Council, I mean, sorry. City Treasurer Matt, did he leave?
He's right here.
Oh, there he is. Oh, man, Matt, we'd love for you to say some words. And same thing from our, of course, our illustrious city clerk, Mr. Robinson.
I really hate hearing my voice up here, so this is going to be really short. Clearly unprepared for this as well. Just happy that I tried to dress up and got a haircut, but I just want to thank council and staff and the general public for entrusting me with finances over the last four and a half years. I'd like to think that we weren't in a bad place before, that we're in a better place than when I came in. And I guess just hope that we can continue to put good numbers up on there, up on the screen for Daryl. And just thanks again for, for giving me that trust.
Thank you, Matt. All right, Mrs. Weaver, City Clerk.
I will reserve what I have to say when I go to give the oath to Sues, but I would like to say that during the last year, eight years, I'm going to cry. I had the work, the opportunity to work with a fellow 1981 ESHS graduate, Carol Pursstik. Carol, thank you for your time on the council. You brought history and the love of El Segundo to the dais. I appreciated your efforts to keep El Segundo, El Segundo. So, good luck to you in the future, it's been great.
All right, following, this is again, departure from our common business. So I'm just looking here, I think I'm okay, Madam Clerk, to go on to reports, right, at this point? Yes, so we're going to go to Councilmember Baldino first, if you'd like to make some comments, thank you.
With pleasure. Carol, it has been an honor to serve with you. And what I will remember and take from the privilege I have had to sit up here and learn from you and, and watch what you do is how much you care. You love this town. And it is obvious, and you show it every day by what you do and what you give to the community. And so, thank you for everything you've done. I'm truly grateful for your service.
Thank you. So I, I think you and I kind of met around 2018, the first time I tried to do this. And I gotta say, it, it is, in a small town like this, the one thing I've learned about being involved in different things is that there is a precious few amount of people that get involved, that get things done, that gets done what has to be done all of the time. And you definitely epitomize that. And it has really been a lot of fun sitting up here, especially the last two years, sitting next to you, because there's a lot of banter that goes on up here that you do not see. But if you looked at the video, you'd see it. And Carol is hilarious. And a lot of people don't realize that, that don't know her. You kind of see her up here, she's here in the head foundation. She has an incredible sense of humor. If you have a chance to have a cocktail with her, I highly suggest you do so. You will be missed, I just want to say thank you very much for the past four years.
Mayor Pro Tem, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few of these in, in no set order. I, I don't want the treasurer to slink out of here as we change the admin code without recognizing sort of the seminal achievement of his time. Our last treasurer got our house in order. I mean, really did. When Treasurer Bender was up here, that was, that was a big deal. And, and we all just took a big sigh of relief that we felt like we understood where the keys to the castle were, or more importantly, the keys to the safe. But building upon that, as treasurer, Matt, I think it's important for us to understand, he, he earned 7% of our general fund just in interest alone. That is a big deal. I mean, that is almost as much as we made on sales tax. So that is the sort of thing that as a city government, you don't count on. It's like finding money in your pocket. And I think that is a tremendous achievement, and that is something that will certainly be missed. We typically viewed that role as the treasurer as something to be very concerned about as opposed to a continual value add. So thank you very much, Matt. I will echo some of the things here said to Carol. And I think what sometimes gets lost in forceful personalities is the deep skill that Carol brought from her professional expertise. As we try to bring union groups to contracts that we all could agree with, with them, and understand her expertise in the mergers and acquisition world, and how departments merge things, and how we optimize the labor force, is something that we will certainly miss. When you try to fill out the Gilligan's Island boat of skills, there's just skills that you have to have. And understanding the people part of a business and how to optimize it is something that I know I learned a great deal from. And her patience with my idiotic blathering about it was, was incredibly, incredibly generous of you. I would also say that, much to Councilmember Drew's comments, there are people in this town who are not always represented because they're not online, they don't show up at meetings. They are a part of El Segundo's past and its future. And they were uniquely represented by your willingness to put time to that and go to see them on Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings at their luncheons. And those are things and efforts that are not seen on the dais. But I certainly speak for all of us when I thank you for them and appreciate it. And lastly, Madam Clerk. You know, the clerk is part of our tripartite government. She is the brake on the council. She's uniquely the parliamentarian and the Supreme Court rolled into one, and oftentimes the only one that knows what's actually happening. I appreciate you keeping us out of jail and the $10 a day fines we accrue for filling out paperwork wrong, which is, I mean, it sounds absurd, but happens. Those are the sorts of things and the generosity with which you gave your time to us, I sincerely appreciate. And I think it is not lost that your comments to Councilmember Pursstik about keeping El Segundo, El Segundo, is something that you certainly prioritized in the way you dealt with us. There's a degree of shadow governance that comes with the clerk. There's a reason it's always elected. It's so we can't tell you what to do, and you can just tell us, stop. And sometimes that's some of the most important things to tell a government to do. So thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Matt Robinson, I remember when I first met you, I didn't really like you very much because on a soccer pitch, and you're on a team that's always very good. And so, we got beat down every week, weekend we got, just kidding, you're amazing. We love what you've done for the city. I think Chris nailed it on the head, like Chris did a great job in setting the foundation, then you just took it to a whole new level. And so, you have, you had, you have credibility. You had instant credibility with this group up here. I know I can say that without equivocation. Everyone on this dais respects you, trusts your decisions, and you are, you're making big decisions every day. So we really appreciate that, we're going to miss you. You've done an incredible thing for the city, so thank you very much. And you should rest easy knowing that you've helped solve a lot of our financial problems just through your investments with your team and Dino's team and everyone else. So thank you very much, Matt, for your service. Tracy? It's been a pleasure working with you. I know I've been difficult to manage at times and keep on track, and you've done an amazing job, so thank you so much. And we're going to miss you up here. And I know your mom's proud because she spent many years in service for this city as well, school board and elsewhere. You come from that tradition, that lineage. And I know it's going to make your folks really proud and, and your kids. Your kids are here too to see this as well. And we're really excited to see what comes next for you. And we love, we love that and love seeing you socially as well, it was fun. Saturday night was fun, so. You were there, Kirby, you remember. Yeah, it was, it was good. Lee, you were there as well, you remember, it was a good party. Carol, man, 2016, it's hard to believe it's been actually over eight years because we got elected in April 2016. Mayor Fuentes, where Suzanne was, is here, I think she was running the meetings. And we both came out guns blazing. We really wanted to make some big changes in this city. And you brought so much knowledge, I know a lot of this has been touched on, but your attention to detail, being able to notice things on Main Street, being able to notice things within the organization that need to be changed. Your business savvy, the experience that was touched on at Sony as a VP there came, became instrumental for the city. And it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. I'm going to miss working with you on a day to day, but I know I'm going to see you at Ed and everywhere else, and you and Percy walking around the neighborhood. So thank you for everything that you've given to this city. I know this day is, is bittersweet, and we're going to miss working with you. So thank you so much. And I know we're going to go to the city attorney, but before we do, just, I have one privilege as mayor, which is to be able to speak right now. And so there's something I want to say, which is I have absolutely relished the job that I've had up here on the dais for the last eight and a half years. What a tremendous opportunity that I've been given. I've loved almost every moment of it. Hyperion was a little bit rough for a lot of us up here, the pandemic. But I've learned so much from all of you. I love this city. So proud to have Ryan and Pat in the back. I don't know where your other three siblings are, we'll talk about that later. My mother here, my wife, Grandma Sue, 91 years old firepower firecracker. Susan and Tim, who I've known for like 25 years, and your kids, so many friends and family. This town helped shape Ryan, Pat, your lives when we moved here, when you were three and four and I was a single dad. And so, it's been my absolute pleasure to serve as the mayor. And I've thought long and hard about what the significance is of mayor of El Segundo. It's a little bit different, we're not Manhattan Beach. We're not Hermosa, where you have a new mayor every 10 to 11 months. Whoever decided many years ago to set up this tradition of a two-year term thought long and hard about it because this city is different. Our residents demand more. The business community demands more. And I've been doing this now for three terms, it's six and a half years, it's a long time. And so I've thought about what's next for me. Well, I think what's next for me is paving the way for someone else in succession and giving someone else up here an opportunity. Bless you, Elise. And, and then in that, I've thought about, well, who, who would be, who do I think would be a great mayor up here? And before we even get to, I know this is out of turn, and that's typical for me, right? I'm an entrepreneur, I don't follow instructions very well, I apologize. But I thought I would take the opportunity to endorse someone for mayor, even though we're not there at the nomination phase. And so I thought about, who's demonstrated that they have the time and the commitment to the city up on this dais? Who has relatable business experience that's so important to this city? That's been working on economic development almost every, every day in conjunction with me? Who is going to preserve what you talked about, Mayor Pro Tem, which is that small town charm and keeping El Segundo what El Segundo is? And who's going to be a good spokesperson for the city? And I think that person is the, the person right here, who's currently serving as the Mayor Pro Tem. And so, I am going to miss this job, but I told, I said, I meant what I said in the candidate form, Ryan was there, other people, I said, I came to terms with the fact that I probably wouldn't be mayor when I decided to run again. And I'm okay with that, I made that decision many months ago. And I'm proud to be able to continue to serve in the dais, even if it's not this seat. Maybe it's that seat, maybe it's, doesn't matter to me. But I want to be up here for another four years, serving this city and making way for someone else. So I wanted to get that on record before we go into this awkward phase of the swearing in and the rest of that stuff. So it's a little bit less awkward now? Anyway, that's how I feel. So, anyway, let's see where we at now. City Attorney, back to you.
Just very briefly, Tracy, I appreciate all of your professionalism and particularly patience in dealing with particularly me over the last 12 years because probably nobody makes as many last minute changes to the agenda as I do. And I know sometimes there was a bit of a grimace that went with it, but thank you, I appreciate it. And again, everything that's been said about tonight is absolutely correct. The, just the motivation, getting those agendas out. Always professional, always a smile on our face, thank you. I really appreciate it, I loved working with you. Carol, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to serve here while you were on this council. Every council has a unique personality. This has been a really good group to work with, and Carol, you're a huge part of that. And eight years is a long time, and I, I always really cherish this, this time I get to spend in this role and, and serve all of you. And Carol, thank you so much for, for the opportunity to work with you. And the best of luck to you, thank you.
City Manager.
You know, Mayor, I think I said in my remarks earlier, obviously everyone will be missed. But I'm sure we'll see you all around town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think this is the time where you step down, Carol. I'm so sorry, and thank you so much. Okay, now, we, City Clerk, back to you.
Now, we will administer the oath of office. Mr. Boils, you're up first.
Last time I did this in 2016, I had a black eye. Remember that surf trip in Mexico? The huge black eye, this is much better. Oh, I'm holding it, thank you. I am.
I.
I, Drew Boils. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservations.
Without mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. All right, thank you. They look like they dressed appropriately, come on up, guys.
Next, Michelle Keldorf. I, Michelle Keldorf. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this, this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
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 Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
Best posture. They wore the formal hoodies.
The formal hoodies.
The black tie.
Okay, here we go. These all your boys? Wow, handsome lads. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Giroux, you're up.
First time I did this was on Zoom call.
You did. Remember that? An anticlimactic.
Very anticlimactic.
So, ready? I.
Hands up, Brian.
Yeah.
I Lance Giroux, do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
All right, here we go, guys. Congratulations. Thank you so very much.
Before I give Suze her oath, Susan, I'm sorry.
Before I give Suze her oath, I'd just like to say a little something. I want to thank the voters of El Segundo. There we go again. For entrusting me to the office of the city clerk for the last 12 and a half years. I took my oath of office on April 17th, 2012, and I am leaving on December 17th, 2024. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure to serve as a city clerk. I've learned a great deal. I achieved my CMC, Certified Municipal Clerk Certificate, met and worked with fabulous people. I've worked alongside memorable councils, and one of my favorite accomplishments was implementing an agenda management system, removing the need to print 500-plus-page council agenda packet notebooks for council and department heads, and we have saved a ton of trees under my clerkship. Right? And they used to deliver, officers would have to deliver these packets to everybody's house. When elected to the position, you really have no idea what you signed up for. You have no clue. Luckily for me, I had Kathy Doman and Mona Schilling, who were willing to answer all my questions and teach me the ways of city clerking, and city attorneys like Mark Hensley, who kept me from making any major mistakes. After Kathy and Mona retired, I have been fortunate enough to work alongside Lily Sandoval and Patricia Harada for the last few years. They are rock stars. They run the day-to-day operations of our office. And Suze, you will be in great hands with these two ladies. And if I could have them, please come up front.
Are they leaving? No. Lily?
I was like, they're here. They're here.
Wow.
I always thought it surprised them. Oh, my gosh.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
And a couple photos. Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Suze, you're up.
Oh, I'm done. I'm gonna hold your hand. You ready? Fine, ready. All right. We get to do some beers.
I.
I, Susan Truax.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
How do you get your kids to have grandkids for you? That's what I want to know. Ryan and Pat, pay attention to this.
Beautiful family. Here we go. Cheese, whiskey, whatever you like. Hey, sweetheart. Sweetheart. What's her name?
Robert.
Mae?
Wes.
Wes. Wes. There we go. Thank you, Wes.
Hold on, Susan. Hold on. Turn on, turn on.
All right, you're up. Yep. Yeah. Okay, so it's, yes, there you go. Now.
We now will conduct the election for mayor. The floor is now open for nominations. The way this works, anybody is able to nominate themselves or somebody else. We then will hold an election in the order of which the nominations were received, and the first candidate to receive a majority, which is three, can you hear me? I'm new to this, will be our mayor. So do we have?
I nominate Chris Pimentel for mayor.
Okay. Is there another nomination? No second is necessary. Okay, all those in favor of Chris Pimentel for mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Oh.
I'll abstain.
Okay. I mean, come on.
What a show of confidence, Chris. Dude, right to the very end, really?
All right, we have a four votes in favor, one abstention, and with that, we have our new mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor Pimentel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now take nominations for mayor pro tem. I nominate Ryan Baldino for mayor pro tem. Other nominations? All right, we will take a vote. Aye. All in favor of Ryan Baldino for mayor pro tem? Aye. That's 5-0, because Ryan didn't abstain. I didn't abstain. Very well, now we'll take council member final comments for the evening, beginning with Councilmember Keldorf.
Go on first. I love it. Okay. I would, I don't know if she's still here, but I definitely wanted to start with a huge thank you to Carol. I am just starting to get a small taste of what is required to serve in this role, and the fact that she's done it for eight years is extremely admirable. She gave so much of herself to the city, and I am certain that I will continue to seek her counsel as the years go on. I would also just like to say that I am so grateful for this opportunity to serve the city in this role, and I'm really happy to do it with the people up here. I think one of the many unique things about El Segundo, and there are many, but it's how interconnected we all are, and it is not an exaggeration to say that we've all been in each other's lives for a very long time. Our kids have played on the same sports teams. More than that, we have mourned together. We have celebrated a number of things together. And I say that because I think that those relationships are important. There are going to be a number of times where we have different perspectives, where we approach things from a very opposite state of mind. But the intent is always to do the right thing, and because we do have such care and respect for each other, I think that it speaks to what this community, what the city is about, and why we have been so successful. I'm extremely proud of the campaign that Drew, Lance, and I ran. I think it was from a point of view of having the utmost respect for each other. And I'm even prouder of the way that the residents of El Segundo turned out. So we have 12,000 registered voters, and we had over 10,000 votes cast, which I'm going to say has to be the most in history. And it was a national election, a big one, but everybody doesn't have to cast a vote for city council. You can still vote on any other number of things. And I think it really speaks to how involved we are as a community, and it's, again, what makes us successful. There are lifelong community volunteers and really stewards of El Segundo here tonight, as well as a whole new crop and batch of people who are willing to give their time and their energy to this city. And it is that that's incredibly motivating. I also want to take a minute to just thank my personal village, my family, my friends who are like family. And when any one of us steps up to do this, I think whether you are a spouse, a partner, a parent, it exposes you in ways that you're just not used to, and it takes the buy-in of everybody in your circle, and I really appreciate you buying in. I know you will help keep me accountable, and for that, I am grateful. My hope is, over the next four years, to really exemplify what it means to represent our residents, as well as all of the people who do a tremendous amount of work to make El Segundo exceptional. So thank you for this. I look forward to sitting up here and serving with these gentlemen for the next four years.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Tracy, I didn't know I was supposed to embarrass you earlier, so I'll take my opportunity right now. If you are foolish enough to run for public service, you meet Tracy, and she gives you a binder, and then she painfully explains to you all the forms you have to fill out, and then you have questions and emails, and she is so patient and so generous with that whole process to make it just almost bearable. But the leadership you have shown in this room with your voice, to keep this train on the track and remind us that we need to either receive and file, or we got to vote on something, has been incredibly instrumental, and the success of the city that we've experienced would not be possible without your hard work. So thank you so much. Congratulations, Susan Truax. I look forward to working with you. I am so happy that you signed up to run. I think you're going to be a great addition to this council chambers. And I want to thank Councilmember Giroux, Councilmember Keldorf, and Councilmember Boils for running.
As mayor, always a mayor.
Once. I am so happy.
I'm getting over it. I'm just kidding.
I am so happy to be in service of a town that I love, and I am looking forward to working with the four of you to continue the efforts that we have put forward to keep El Segundo the greatest town in the world. And so thank you all for giving your time, giving your thoughts, and just showing up on a daily basis for the city. Thank you all.
Mayor and Councilmember Boils.
Thank you. I was kidding. You can call me councilmember. You can call me Drew, as far as I'm, you know, but Susan, it's so great to see, knowing you and your kids for so long, and so many trips to see you up here on the dais. Tracy, we're going to miss you tremendously. I think you're in good stead with Susan. I know you feel good about her following your lead, and I feel great about it. And, oh, man, what else did I want to say? Just not, welcome, Michelle. Welcome to the dais. It's great to have you up here. I agree, we had a great campaign, all of us. We all put a lot of effort into that campaign, and to get that many people to turn out, get the vote of confidence from the residents felt really good. And so I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be up here, and I'm going to relish this next four years, and then I'm done. If I decide to run again, when I'm 58, Daryl, you got to call, you know what on that, okay? Lee, do not let me ever run again, okay? Anyway, I'm just kidding. I love you, El Segundo. Thank you for the opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. I will say that in the history of El Segundo, pardon? Did I just cut you off? Oh, no! Dude, that's like twice tonight. I gotta tell you. Did you? Is anybody else want to throw one at me while you're out there? I don't know. Did you get a haircut? Apparently I did. Not as nice as Matt's, apparently, but. Should I go down? You want me to go after you? No, please, go ahead. I'm going to go beat myself. It's all right. I just actually, again, wanted to thank everybody that turned out to vote and for the support. I appreciate. This first, actually ended up being four and a half years, has been a very humbling and learning experience, one that I've enjoyed very much, and I'm looking forward to the next four. I do want to say thank you to some people. You know, number one, my family has been very supportive of the three times I've done this. My daughter and her friends who have got some good volunteer hours, walking the streets of El Segundo, handing out pamphlets. I'm sure they will wear more comfortable shoes next time. You know, there were some people, you know, in particular, that really kind of stepped out, I think, out of their comfort zone to help me out this time, and it really helped me out a lot. I don't know if he's still here, but Jim Kirk, Nick Coulter, who doesn't ever come this side of Main Street, you know, really kind of helped spread the word, and I really appreciated that very much. Gina Traver, who is here, and out of J's, you know, a lot of support there, and I really appreciate that. Liz West, who I don't think is here, really helped me out a lot. Bill Ruane, I know is hiding in the back, who does not, who always likes to hide in the shadows, was a big help in a lot of different ways, you know, from advice all the way through. That gentleman knows everything about this town, if you didn't know that already. The other groups I really want to thank is our labor union groups, who've supported me through this whole process. The CEA, the fire, and police.
I am so happy.
I'm getting over it. I'm just kidding.
I'm so happy to be in service of a town that I love. And I am looking forward to working with the four of you to continue the efforts that we have put forward to keep El Segundo the greatest town in the world. And so, thank you all for giving your time, giving your thoughts, and just showing up on a daily basis for the city. Thank you all. Mayor and Councilmember Boils.
Thank you. I was kidding. You can call me council member. You can call me Drew, as far as I'm, you know. Susan, it's so great to see, knowing you and your kids for so long and so many trips to see you up here in the dais. Tracy, we're going to miss you tremendously. I think you're in good stead with Susan. I know you feel good about her following your lead, and I feel great about it. And, oh, man, what else did I want to say? Just not, welcome, Michelle. Welcome to the dais. It's great to have you up here. I agree, we had a great campaign, all of us. We all put a lot of effort into that campaign. And to get that many people to turn out, get the vote of confidence from the residents, felt really good. And so, I appreciate, again, the opportunity to be up here. And I'm going to relish this next four years. And then I'm done. If I decide to run again, when I'm 58, Darrell, you got to call, you know what, on that, okay? Lee, do not let me ever run again, okay? Anyway, I'm just kidding. I love you, El Segundo. Thank you for the opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. I will say that in the history of El Segundo... Pardon? Did I just cut you off? Oh, no!
Dude, that's like twice tonight, I gotta tell you.
Did you?
Is anybody else going to throw one at me while you're out there? I don't know.
Did you get a haircut?
Apparently I did. Not as nice as Matt's, apparently, but... Should I go now? You want me to go after you?
No, please, go ahead. Go beat myself.
It's all right. I just actually, again, wanted to thank everybody that turned out to vote and for the support. I appreciate. This first, actually ended up being four and a half years, has been a very humbling and learning experience, one that I've enjoyed very much, and I'm looking forward to the next four. I do want to say thank you to some people. You know, number one, my family has been very supportive of the three times I've done this. My daughter and her friends who have got some good volunteer hours walking the streets of El Segundo, handing out pamphlets. I'm sure they will wear more comfortable shoes next time. You know, there were some people, you know, in particular, that really kind of stepped out, I think, out of their comfort zone to help me out this time. And it really helped me out a lot. I don't know if you're still here, but Jim Kirkker, Nick Coulter, who doesn't ever come this side of Main Street, you know, really kind of helped spread the word, and I really appreciated that very much. Gina Traber, who is here. And at a G's, you know, a lot of support there, and I really appreciate that. Liz West, who I don't think is here, really helped me out a lot. Bill Ruane, I know is hiding in the back, who does not, who always likes to hide in the shadows, was a big help in a lot of different ways. You know, from advice all the way through that gentleman knows everything about this town, if you didn't know that already. The other groups I really want to thank is our labor union groups, who've supported me through this whole process. The CEA, the fire, and police. And specifically, the reason why I was so thankful for that is that they were out of contract the entire four years I was on this council. So, to be able to get a group of people who think well enough of you to look at you as someone who can have a conversation and will do the right thing, and they could trust over the next four years, it really made a big difference, and I really appreciate all that. It's, you know, not easy sometimes, as you see through these negotiations, to keep things on the level. But I really appreciated that help. And finally, the person who has run, had the unfortunate job of helping me run these campaigns for three years. I will tell you, three years, three times. Those of us that have run, I will tell you, it is not a fun process at all. There are a lot of ups and downs. There are a lot of bad days. And they seem to accentuate a heck of a lot more than the good days. But Mr. Cleland, a very good friend of mine, I have asked more of you on these three times than I should have ever asked anybody. It's the last one, though. I will not ask you again. But thank you very much for all the time you put in and putting up with the attitude that I will put off, especially those last three weeks. So, again, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the next four years, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pimentel? That sounds good, huh?
You can go now. Yeah. It's the new sightlines. I'm just not used to them.
I failed to let Ms. Truax say something when she gave her oath. So, if you would be so kind as to let her speak a few words.
The floor is yours, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mostly, the quirk is supposed to be seen and not heard unless there's something that you miss, and hopefully I catch. But I would like to say thank you to my family, who encouraged me to throw my hat in the ring in this kind of a crazy, it's... I don't know if Ron Swanson is still here, but he said it was the shortest campaign ever, so it was. I am extremely grateful to the A Team, as I was calling it, but I now learned that they are rock stars, Lily and Patricia, because I have a wee bit of a learning curve, mostly to Tracy, our outgoing clerk. She's just been a wonderful resource and has already started walking me around City Hall. I will take three or four times to learn everybody's name, I'm sure. And training starts first thing tomorrow, or midday tomorrow. And I look forward to meeting and working with city staff, to working with the council, and interacting with the community. And thank you very much for this opportunity. I will do my best to live up to the very, very big imprint that Tracy has made in the last twelve and a half years. Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you. I think I've got everyone. Maybe. As I was saying, in the history of El Segundo, there's very few mayors who were elected to three terms. Typically, it's in a time of great change. Mayor Selby served from 45 to 56, transitioning us from purely around a refinery and then the World War II economy to the aerospace empire that we became. Carl Jacobson, getting us through the end of the Cold War and the transformation, the shrinking of the aerospace, and transforming all of what we see east of PCH. And certainly Mayor Boils in the last three terms, where we've had a pandemic, we've had unrest, and we've seen a remarkable change in our economy to an innovation center in Southern California. That requires a unique personality and skill set, which you certainly have. And that is a testament to you that we are California's sixth fastest-growing economy, that we are a headline city. Those things do not happen by accident. So, I think that I speak for broadly, and a royal we, all of us, and appreciate your time, effort, ability, and success. And thank you so much.
Mayor, can I say one thing? I just want to thank my wife.
Actually, the floor is not yours yet, but I will recognize you. I will yield one minute of a KPI.
I'll be real quick. I was remiss. I forgot to mention my wonderful five kids, who've supported me for the last three terms. Ryan, Patrick, Dylan, Bren, Merrick, Lee, Sue, my mom, Elder Citizen of the Year, not to be confused with eldest, Elder Citizen of the Year, and just our whole support system. My dad, when he was still alive, was so proud and so helpful as well. So, anyway, it's thank you to you guys for allowing me to spend all that time away from home and everything else. I'm going to be surfing more and hanging out more, so, a little bit, anyway. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. Much appreciated.
No, of course. And I think that to bring this to our last item, I think I speak broadly for all of us, where we thank all the voters for the trust you put in us, for our neighbors, who are our other elected officials. And I don't know that there's probably a time where we've had a warmer or closer relationship at the supervisory level, at the assembly level, the senatorial level, and at the federal level than what we enjoy now. And that speaks to the trust that you have in us. And certainly, on a personal note, to thank my family, who are impossible forces generally for good, and the patience that they've had with all of these. So with that, I will go to our last piece. And this is Mrs. S. Claus' annual request for a conditional use permit, business license, and various waivers. We have several recommendations to approve and immediately issue a conditional use permit to Mr. S. Claus. Approve the use of air rights and waive the Santa Monica Radio 160R procedure to grant a free business license to S. Claus Enterprises, a nonprofit organization. To waive El Segundo Municipal Code 8-Tech-4-Tech-11B, driveway permits required. Waive the noise ordinances to permit the clatter of reindeer hooves and the shouting of reindeer names and the sound of bells on December 24th. Waive the trespass ordinance, it's very important, to allow Mr. S. Claus to deliver gifts. Waive the animal control ordinance to allow eight reindeer to land on the rooftops in El Segundo. And waive the pooper-scooper regulation, El Segundo Municipal Code 7-Tech-1-Tech-4. Additionally, Mr. S. Claus has been directed to the Coastal Commission for Clearance Over the Ocean, the DMV for valid vehicle registration, the Department of Health and Welfare to ensure his elves are receiving minimum wage, no wage theft, and the Air Quality Management District to ensure a safe and clear sleigh ride. Do I have a motion to approve?
I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. City Attorney reports.
Nothing more this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager, any follow-up?
Just on behalf of your staff, congratulations to our re-elected council members, to our incoming councilperson, Keldorf, and our new city clerk. We, as staff, look forward to working with you in the future as we move forward with all of the exciting things that we have ahead and looking forward to many, many more successes with you at the helm. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, at 7:12, we are adjourned.